I'd like the call today's planning commission meeting to order. All members are present, so we have established quorum. We do have a number of cases and communications on the agenda today. So if there's anyone in the audience that is intending to speak during today's commission meeting, if you would do, take an oath, you can sit or stand, might as well stay seated. But do you affirm or swear to tell the truth to this commission? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We do ask today, we're having a little bit of sound trouble, so if you are going to talk, if you could go up to the podium, once we get to that portion of the meeting, state your name and also your address in Athens, or street name is sufficient. First case is number 1006, the AutoTech Service Center on East State Street. It is a Title 41 site plan review. Mr. Logue, would you like to lead discussion on this matter?
Yeah, I'll just go really quick. I don't have too much to comment on this project. John did most of the work. This is a rebuild of the AutoTech Service Center out on East State Street that was totaled by the heavy winds and tornadoes from September 17th of this year. And so at the city level, we've been trying to get this project approved and through the system as quickly as possible, so he can rebuild and continue his business.
Okay.
But John handled the rest, so I'll let him speak up.
Yeah, I forwarded all of you the drawings last week on this. Again, it is a Title 41, but we were trying to expedite it through as quick as we could so they can get started. So I haven't really put together a summary on the project, but I can tell you that they did go through, Mr. Higgins went through the shade tree commission last Thursday evening. The resolution there was that he was to plant two trees on the property, and he's required to do, or should have, 31 trees overall, which can't fit on the property as it is. So if his insurance is going to pay for such a project, for banking them or putting them elsewhere, then they would accept that. But if the insurance doesn't pay for it, then the two trees on the site, they agreed to accept just those two. So I'll have to work with Ron Lucas, and we'll try to get a quote together on putting the trees a given location, and see what the cost is, give the quote to the insurance company, and then see if they're, if it's included, or if they'll pick it up. We don't know yet. But worst-case scenario, if that doesn't work, that they did say, they would accept the two trees on the property where he can't plant just two.
Okay.
So that's the shade trees resolution right now. The fire chief, I spoke with him this morning actually, and he said that he's fine with everything, just that they lock box be installed on the building, and that he does do a life safety inspection when the building is completed. Everything's okay through Engineering Public Works. Andy said the water, sewer, everything is fine, because all of the taps are existing, and everything's still there, so it was tying back into what was there. On my end, everything met, bulk control, parking setbacks, et cetera, lot coverage, so everything was good in regards to that. And I never heard anything back from the police chief, but typically on some project like this, it usually comments about lighting, and they do have adequate lighting on the building for the parking, so.
There was no stormwater concerns or anything from the Public Works Department?
No.
Okay.
And the project is not in the floodplain. It was included in the letter of map revision that FEMA approved back in August of this year, which includes where AutoTech is, as well as the Holzer Clinic. Those have been legally removed from the floodplain, based upon the fill work they did.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
This is essentially a rebuild of the building that was there, is that what I'm seeing? Pretty much just reestablishing it and putting it back in?
Yeah, the owner can speak more to that, I'm sure, from what was there, but according to the plans that, you know, I have here, what was on file from before, it looks pretty much the same.
Is this something that requires a structural engineer's inspection?
It does have state-approved prints. The drawings have already been approved by state, so, yes.
So, and the treaty commission will generate a recommendation, a letter, formal along the way?
Well, they send me the notes, and then I generate the letter.
Okay.
Basically, I just told you what it's going to say.
Okay. I was wondering who the secretary was.
Kind of up in the air, I think.
Okay. And I know lighting is always important there, because they have, you know, people want to get the cars out once in a while. I assume, is it going to be any more wind resistant than the present one, or?
Hmm.
We hope. I think it's that 90 miles an hour load there, but we hope we don't see it again.
Yeah, from my understanding, the anchors did hold, unfortunately.
Nothing else?
Yes.
They broke off above ground level.
Right.
Or sheer it all, or whatever.
Okay. Does anyone have questions for the owners, or anything that we would like the podium?
No. So we need a motion to approve this?
Yeah. Anyone?
I'll move.
Okay.
I'll move. Your second?
I'll second.
Okay.
All those in favor of approving, I guess, on the condition that the treaty commission is satisfied with how we handle the vegetation on the site? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nope.
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
There you go.
No other cases, I take it? We'll move along to communications. We have information about East Union Street planned development. Do you?
That's been removed.
It has been, okay.
Yeah, he made a request yesterday to be removed from the agenda.
Okay. All right. Does the commission have any other communications?
I think we do.
We do.
Was it?
Mr. Spezza, Diane and Mark Spezza are here to discuss possible annexation out on East State Street.
Okay.
They were never on the agenda, so I don't know if we want to have it as a communication, or number five, opportunity for citizens to speak.
I think the commission would be fine if it's communications.
Okay.
Did you want, again, to lead discussion on that, or?
I can just give some, a brief background, and I'll allow Mr. Spezza to cover the rest.
Okay.
The Spezza's own a parcel of land out on, off of East State Street. It is not within the city limits, I believe it's 70, 80 acres.
Seventy-four acres, approximately 74 acres.
Okay. They have attempted in the past to work with the Athens Conservancy to buy that land and have it turned over as open space. There were some grant situations that were opportunities with the state that they were going through, and issues came up with the appraisals for the land, et cetera, and so that, that project fell through. But Mr. Spezza has a piece of land that's, there's a few issues that he would probably want to address with the planning commission, because it's an annexation, ultimately, the responsibility for accepting an annexation would be with city council, and the planning commission would discuss the zoning parts of that, and make that recommendation to council. But when I met with Mr. Spezza yesterday to talk about this, I encouraged him to start talking about this, since there is, he would like to see this move forward, if it's going to move forward sometime before the, in the first half of 2011. So I thought it was just a good idea to start getting this information out there, and getting feedback from the commission. There would be potential for development on a portion of the site, but another, a large majority of it, or roughly half of it, discussion of possibly zoning that as open space, or conservation easements, or something like that. So, but I'll let Mr. Spezza speak on it for, if you'd like to.
I'll go to the podium, then.
Yeah.
No, no, we're going to. But he may not be picking it up at all. Okay, so. So it is along, East State Street, pretty much, this is?
East State Street's here, Mr. Spezza has a parcel here off Cook Drive, as well as this parcel, which has East State Street, this is typically called Pepsi Rock. All of this is outside the city limits. Stroud's Run is back here. This is city land, these are the Hope Drive, Athens Metropolitan Housing.
Market on that, on East State Street, so.
Right, okay.
And these are five-foot contours.
Okay, so it is pretty.
Yeah. And the major way of getting in it, I've talked to Mark before about this, they're actually, the only real entrance to it is over there, this lot right here.
Which is owned by?
Is Mark Spezza's, Mark Spezza's as well. Again, that's, this is B3 zone right here, I believe. And then that's the rest of it, the 74 is outside the city.
I believe Mr. Spezza will be talking about a different possible access to this site.
Yeah, there was discussion sometime last year about trying to get, and actually, the city council, who does give easements, gave an easement to the Conservancy District when they were thinking about, Athens Conservancy, when they were thinking about acquiring this about two, two, three years ago. Again, I think I'm an easing, easement from the back end of Hope Drive this way.
Yeah, it does seem to make sense.
Yeah, so that's, just so you know, that was a discussion, and actually, a granting of the easement, about two years ago, maybe three.
Okay. All right. Mr. Spezza, thank you.
Yeah, just kind of a real brief scenario here, is that we have, we've been talking to a developer, housing developer, and of course, as with any housing developer, they would be looking for city utilities. So what we'd be looking for is access to city water, city sewage, and other city utilities, as well as access off of Hope Drive into the property, which we're estimating is about 650 feet to get to the property. There is a manhole, a city manhole cover at the end of Hope Drive, so that would be obviously the logical extension of sewage. And what we would be requesting is an R3 zoning on the portion, and we're guesstimating that it would be somewhere between 35 and 45 acres, depending on the individual developer. What we thought we would like to do is, with the remainder of the property, keep it as open space, green space, which would preserve the viewscape coming in off of East State Street. So in many ways, we, we see this as, I guess, a potential best-case scenario, if in fact the whole property can't be green space, to kind of take a look at splitting it, and keeping as much green space as we can, leaving available to the developer what he would need to do to put the project in.
So how much, are you, but you would be selling, or I guess, allowing the developer to use the whole lot? I mean, are you, are you going to say?
We would.
Development, we only will allow to occur on this eastern side?
It would be the back east, I guess I would say the northeastern corner.
Okay, so basically behind the hill?
Which would be approximately. That's right.
That is seen from East State Street?
That's correct.
Okay.
And what we would do is, you know, again, try and create a buffer on both sides of the hill.
Okay.
So that on the north, as well as the south side, we would have that designated as green space.
Okay.
In terms of, if my memory is correct, the annexation process is the city gives fire, police, water, sewer, and if I remember correctly, that's, again, most of it's in the council's purview.
Right.
For the, I guess they would say, we were going to give these services, the county looks at the service as we release. I'm kind of vague on this, because I know they've changed some of the laws within the past couple of years.
That's why we're here, to try and get an understanding of the process.
Well, I know there's, I know they just changed some of the laws about two years ago, in terms of fast annexation or something like that, because we had that old Peach Ridge thing that was kind of accelerated version. But again, I don't know how it changes, really, the mechanism that's involved.
You can move it a lot faster if it's just one piece of land.
Okay.
If you've got, you know, 100 different parcels and 100 different property owners, and you have to get a percentage of those property owners to sign off on the annexation, and so there's a lot of horse trading that would probably go on. But if it's a single property, then it's just a question of getting the township trustees to sign off, and the county commissioners, and if they will, then it can move relatively quick through the process.
I forgot about the trustees, yes.
Right.
I mean, we could use the old Columbia Gas property on East State Street as an example. I would not say that that's moving rapidly.
I would expect that to be a model. Right. I believe that's starting to move forward, though, but it has taken a long time on that one. That's been off and on for, at the county level, for at least nine months, maybe 12 months.
And it is interesting that you bring that up, and that, again, as far as I know, out on East State Street, there are two individual properties that are literally surrounded by the city of Athens, and yet are outside the city limits.
Right.
So, you know, again, this would be a similar situation of bringing in property that is in the township, and having to go through the township trustees to get approval.
I guess one of the reasons why I bring up the services, I'm assuming we have adequate services on Hope Drive. That would be a question I'd end up, before we commit saying we're going to give the services. I know, you said there's a storm.
Lift station.
Lift station.
Yeah, and not that I'm an expert on Hope Drive pump station there, but I think there are two pumps in there that would probably have to be upgraded if, you know, depending on how many quote-unquote bedrooms were involved, I would think.
Yeah, and that's, I guess that's where it's leading, if you had the estimate, what that would look like.
Well, you know, again, as, as, through my knowledge of having done other stuff out there, as I said, there's, there is lift station there, from my understanding, there are multiple pumps in there, there are two pumps in there, and whether they would have to be upgraded, I would think that that would be, you know, again, something that the developer would work out with the city.
Yes, and again, this is just part of the process.
Yeah.
That would be somewhere, somewhere in there, when the city, city, city council says we're going to give these services, they will ask a technical review, not in our purview, but obviously Public Works.
Yeah.
And Andy's going to need, like, projections, in terms of what the bedrooms would be, the number of users, what we're looking at, in order to assess this.
Yeah, well, yeah, part of, you know, again, part of what we're getting into is, and I guess I want to just state that we've had a discussion with a developer. The developer is noted as a low-income, moderate housing developer. And as a matter of fact, listed as one of the top 50 developers, low-income housing developers in the country. They're based in Ohio, they're somewhat familiar with Athens, so our initial discussions, you know, with them were, okay, you've got a piece of property here, but it's not in the city limits, how difficult is it going to be for us to get it annexed? And I basically said, well, I'm going to get the process started, whether you take on the project, or I end up talking to another developer. I feel as though there's going to be a strong interest from this developer, but, you know, of course, putting together the numbers, and him ultimately, you know, doing the math is going to be a major aspect of this. But nonetheless, we're looking at some sort of annexation in with an R3 designation. We don't want to, we don't want a designation any higher, in other words, a business designation, but in the same sense, we, we would, based on the look of the site, we would need that R3 for multiple housing.
Okay, as the only politician up here, of course, the viewshed is one of the things that I will get feedback on.
Yes.
So that's the open space that you're talking about, is the ridge line, I assume, or is part, mostly ridge line?
Yeah.
The open space would actually be on both sides of the ridge line, so, and I, you know, again, I don't want to say, you know, how far down on the north side it would be, but it would be on both sides of that ridge line, again, protecting the tree, tree line, as well as the viewscape there.
Okay.
And that's the reason that we want to come in from the Hope Drive area, in that if we have to come in from East State Street or Cook Drive, then it's going to disturb that viewscape.
Would you anticipate the Cook Drive site being separated off of this?
I would anticipate that, that's a one-acre, a commercial site, and.
So it can stand alone?
It could be separated off. The fact of the matter is, we have that attached to this 70 acres through deed, but we also have a separate piece of property on East State Street, that's about nine acres, that also joins this. So, you know, essentially, we would separate those two off, and then create the green space off of the remainder of the 73 acres.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Which I can, you know, again, if you need me to, you know, point anything out on the map, I can, I can do that for you.
Did you want any more delineation of what he's talking about, or?
Well, I'm sorry, you did, what did you mention about the, is this parcel separate? It does look like there's another.
I can.
Yes.
The mic's a little too up here, we hope.
This is a separate parcel for this large?
This is a separate parcel, this is in the city limits, this is Zone B3, I believe.
All right, and do you have any attention with this property of developing it, at this, in this discussion?
The morning, Pepsi Rock.
It's, it really is what is referred to as Pepsi Rocks, and in particular, you can see, this is really.
Right.
Rock face right across through here. There is, there's a little corner down here that does have, I would say about an acre, does have some development potential. But this whole parcel here, the whole 73 acres, is attached by deed to this parcel here, which, there is a residential house.
Right.
Or I should say, a commercial house here.
Okay.
And that's the way the deed reads, is this piece and this piece together, this piece being in the city limits, this being out.
Okay, and again, this, this sort of valley here, here you're discussing?
Here's what I, here's what I originally drew out, per my thoughts, and that would be taking, taking an area along here, along, where you start getting a little bit steep up through here, and just running it up through here, creating somewhere in there between 35 to 40 acres. Again, allowing them enough space to move whatever dirt they need to move in here, and develop whatever they need to develop in here, but clearly, if we use this as a barrier, it protects the whole.
Viewshed part here.
The whole viewshed, as well as, as well as the north side of that hillside, down into the valley.
Yes, what about the spaces here, is that another open space?
This is all state-owned, this is all Stroud's Run.
Okay.
And this is the city here.
With the exception of Mr. Hayes' stuff.
Mr. Hayes is in here, and over here. And of course, this is the mall. Now, at one point, you know, again, we had talked to the Conservancy District about having, having this part of a grant that they're looking at, but it appears as if there's very, very little chance of that ever happening at this point.
Not just through them, but through another organization, the friends of Stroud's Run, they're telling them as well, it just appears as if that just will not happen, so.
So, but the concept is that you would develop low-income housing, and this, create a sort of buildable area in the shadow of the hill along East State Street, and then the rest would be granted as an easement, or not an easement, I'm sorry, but a conservation?
We would, we would, we would put together some sort of conservation easement on the remainder, but, you know, again, we're in a position where we also have to deal with Canaan Township trustees, and they're going to, you know, they're going to create, you know, their own concerns about the property, so we want to be able to work with them, as well as the city.
Canaan Township.
At that point, at that point, and I think the, the people I've talked with here in the city are aware, we've done almost everything we can to kind of protect the viewscape here, and this is our best option at this point, is to convince from the Hope Drive access. And again, as, as, you know, as you're aware, you've got Metropolitan Housing here, and, you know, based on my conversations with Metropolitan Housing, there just seems to be a real need for low- to moderate-income housing, so we've kind of gone that way. As a matter of fact, the individual I talked to said there can be up to a, a two-year waiting list in the city itself, they can place people outside the city, but what this would really improve is being able to have people access the bus route and everything else, which I think is a key for, at least in my mind, creating this additional housing.
Have you had conversations with the Canaan trustees?
I did about two years ago, when we were looking at the Clean Ohio Fund grant, I had some discussions with them, and they actually approved it, based on a formula we used to do some sort of tax abatement for them. But I'm guessing they have a much more complicated formula that they're using now with Columbia Gas piece, and probably would want to do something similar.
Did they have concerns or interests apart from the tax issues?
I think that was mainly their, their issue, they lost the tax base, and, you know, I, you know, totally understand, when, you know, they lose a piece of property, they're not able to salt the roads, or whatever, that, you know, they need that, those funds for, so that's why I did create a concept that would help them, and they did sign off on the original letter, although when it got to the Athens County Commissioners, they disapproved it, so.
Can I ask why they disapproved it, or?
That's probably of record. It's probably of record, although they did lose half of the record, it was not recorded for some reason, but it is of record, and I think if I look back a year, look at that, I think I would defer to that.
There was a disagreement on what do you value the property? I mean, again, with the Clean Ohio Fund, you have to have assessment, and assessment comes a question of, you know, do they accept the assessment?
In fact, we have 50-page commercial appraisal done through the Athens Conservancy, funded it, and picked the appraiser, and we agreed to sell the property at the praise value, although we didn't agree with the appraisal, we thought the appraisal was low, and Commissioners thought the appraisal was way high, so the difference of opinion.
Have you had a discussion with Keith Andrews from the Housing?
I did have a discussion with him, and I identified who I was, and I didn't want to indicate that anybody that, you know, would be looking at this would be doing an injunction with them, but my discussion with him was, you know, what is the situation for low-income housing? Is there a waiting list?
Oh, yes, yeah. You know the market, you're a real estate agent, you know, it's hard to city.
But, you know, it's, it's nice to get that confirmation from somebody, and in particular, I think what he said was, the biggest issue we have is the fact that the people, and he said, you know, some are veterans, et cetera, who need housing, also need transportation, they don't have transportation, and we can place people outside the city limits who have transportation, but the people who don't, that's where the difficulty is.
And the rates, the rental rates, that we market at, we have yours.
Yeah, and, so.
Okay, it sounds like you have a lot of, you know, I think it sounds good, from my, you know, just one member of the planning commission, but again, you have coordination of trustees, commissioners, council, you're going to do.
And that's why we thought, we needed to get started, to put together a plan as to how we step through this, and where do we go next, and what do we do, so. We really appreciate Paul setting this meeting up.
Thank you.
And letting us get started, because we do have a, we do have a pretty strict timeline with, not only the developer, but this property.
I will go ahead and have the city start reviewing it, and for the infrastructure and the roadway, and try to get you some responses, based on this conceptual.
Probably council, or at least all the participants, will want a very defined, you know, area, border, or location. I mean, in theory, the planning commission does recommendation for the zoning, but, you know, the delineation is going to have to be a little bit, you know, tight, so we know what's what at that time.
In the city's review, can you guys do that sort of a reverse way of what currently is the utility infrastructure, and here's what it could, the number of units that it could support? And that way, they, I guess, would know if, if they wanted more, more units, they're going to have to pay for increasing the capacity down Hope Drive.
I don't even have a good, sound idea, other than, you don't have a, yes, you're not to, concept of 100 apartments, or 40, or?
No, but.
Two or three bedroom?
I think if you look at the, you look at the contour. I think if you look at the, you look at the contours of the potential site, there's, you know, because of those contours, there's really steep slopes, so there's, if you're looking at affordable housing, if you're really going to do major excavation and flattening, the cost of doing that's going to, you're not going to be able to do affordable housing in that situation. So I would imagine, based upon what I saw on there, that the closest you could do is probably something similar to the scope of Athens Metro Housing, right, on Hope Drive. So I'm not sure how many apartments are there, roughly 24?
Forty-four configurations.
But doing that in a much less dense?
Yeah, but I think that's probably the density you'd be able to fit on there.
I guess we could give you a basis.
Yeah, and again, I've done some ballpark numbers, and I think that they're probably going to have something in the neighborhood of about 15 usable acres, if, you know, depending on how, how they go in.
Right, I mean, yeah, they'll probably do a slight cut and fill, but not, just to create each lot, not to create a mass, you know.
And in theory, we'd eventually see this as a plan year development, once it gets, you know, once it, if it starts rolling, ends up as a, rather than a subdivision, since there are apartments, and the easement would be a road, but it's probably more of a PUD than a subdivision at this point, right?
That's what I would think, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Any further questions, concerns, commission members, like to raise?
No, I can't think of any, yeah.
Mr. Spezza, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing you in the future. There's no other communications? We'll move along to our reports from our city planner and development code enforcement. Who would like to begin?
I'll start. I don't have anything for you today. I've been working on the wireless communications, but knowing that there's a few things on the agenda already today, I don't have anything good to provide for you yet. So I should have that for the first meeting in January on the 5th.
Okay.
Good, Mr. Mayor. I'm aware that there is a town hall meeting coming up. Do you remember the date of that, in January? It'll be after our next meeting.
I believe January 25th is the date that we are targeting for, weather permitting. Let me confirm that, Mayor.
Okay, and there's a topic at this point?
Tuesday, January 25th would be the ideal date. We have a snow date for the following week, if needed.
Okay.
The topic has not been prescribed yet, but I believe it'll be more of an open house that we've done in the past, where citizens can ask questions to the mayor and service safety director and staff as needed.
Definitely attend that.
Cookies punch.
Warm fuzzy feelings.
Keep it light, that's a good idea. All right, thank you, Mr. Lugg. Mr. Pasquet?
I have nothing to do.
We did lead us in the case 1006, though, which we thank you for.
I do have a question. Of course, there was a sign meeting, and there's another one for January sometime?
January 6th, Thursday evening, 5:30. It's what is tentatively, that's why I didn't bring it up, because it hasn't been confirmed yet, but I think that's a pretty strong, we were going to try to do it this month, but with the holidays, it just got too hard for everyone, so we moved it back till after the holidays.
And the purpose of this, of course, is to keep it always a small group of equal property owners?
Right, now we're about five and five, six and six.
Okay.
So we're in that range between property owners and landlords, so.
And has the Planning Commission gotten the minutes from the last two meetings, or?
Brought it to the last meeting.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I remember seeing them minutes.
Just so we know where it is.
And there hasn't been a meeting since then.
Is the, I mean, is the intention of this meeting sort of another sort of interstitial meeting, or is it more for, to make the recommendations to?
I think we may get to the point where recommendation at the next one. If not close, then the recommendation, maybe, maybe two more meetings.
Okay.
Because there were some areas that we really hadn't discussed yet.
Okay.
The B2D was a good example, we hadn't even, haven't even begun talking about that, so it could be two more meetings, but I'm hearing through both sides that they both have recommendations to bring to the table next time, so we'll see what happens.
Okay, so it's more, it's not just about rental signs any longer, or is it?
Rental property management.
Okay, okay.
And one more question, zoning board appeals was last night, how?
Zoning board appeals last night, two cases, both of them passed. One was for a addition or a roof that was built over a patio without a permit, and it got, it got approved unanimously. And the other one was for Athens Bike Shop sign, wanted to be in a location that was too close to the property line, and it approved for the one.
Okay, just wondered.
What, and why were they able to, what was the, I guess, the variance given for the location this time?
For the, I'm sorry, which one?
For the Athens Bike?
The Bike Shop, he requested to put a freestanding sign within 10 feet of a property next door to him.
Oh, okay.
So could have put it elsewhere on the site, but his request was to put it within the 10-foot side yard setback, and we had to deny it, so he went through them, he got his merits to put it there.
Okay, thanks.
All right, any questions? I thank you both. Since citizens have vacated the room.
I think we chased them out, the last two minutes there.
Move on to announcements and other business. As always, the first announcement is that January 5th, our next meeting is planned. That'll be in the new year at 12:00 PM. I would ask the commission members to start thinking about our special session, and it may, I think, it could be with the sign, once after we have the sign recommendations, it would probably be an ideal one, having a night meeting. So start thinking about when that might work in the new year, maybe, maybe February, I'll just throw that out there.
And I'm aware, I think, there's a public hearing coming for the 60% lock coverage, is that the 10th?
Yes.
For City Council.
Okay, 10th, okay, of January?
Monday, January 10th.
Okay.
So that, that will give them an opportunity to be looking at it, so that's another thing where we're affected by, or we're --
Yeah, we're that we recommend it. This could, this could be the one.
Chickens.
That's right. And disposition of last week's minutes, has everyone had a moment to review those?
Yes.
In lieu of actually having the sections whipped, you know, I believe.
Okay.
All those in, I would --
I'll, I move the except the minutes.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Good job.
It'd be very, extremely disappointing you if you did not second that one. All those in favor, for the minutes? Thank you, any opposed? Okay, this meeting is now adjourned, thank you.